All right, we're going to open up the September the 10th. We're going to have the tentative budget public hearing. We're going to have the invocation by City Manager Shadrack and then the pledge of allegiance by myself. So please let's stand up, please.
Let us pray. Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight. We ask for your wisdom and guidance in making decisions for our community that have a financial impact. We ask your continued guidance over the decisions we make operationally with the city. And we ask that you continue to be with our first responders. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Firstner?
Here.
Commissioner Oliver?
I received a call from Commissioner Oliver who informed me to apologize on his behalf that he was unable to be here tonight. His mother had a procedure and he is with her in the state of Georgia.
All right. Start off here with the mayor's announcement. This is a public hearing on the proposed budget and tentative millage rate for the city of Ocoee. Notice of this hearing was contained in the notice of proposed property taxes mailed by the property appraiser. The city commission has previously set a tentative millage rate of 5.5 mills, which represents a 17.28 increase in millage over the rollback rate of 4.6898 mills. All right, we'll have a briefing by the city attorney.
Thank you. So the preliminary millage rates set by the city commission contained in the trim notice is 5.5 mills. The maximum millage rate, which may be levied by the city by regular majority vote for the 2025 to 2026 fiscal year, is 7.11 mills. Such maximum millage rate having been determined pursuant to section 200.185, subsection 3A of the Florida statutes. The establishment of a millage rate between 7.1101 mills and 7.821 mills requires a two-thirds vote, supermajority, of the membership of the city commission, which means four votes. The establishment of a millage rate between 7.8211 mills and 10 mills requires a unanimous vote of the city commission. Additionally, any millage rate adopted above the preliminary millage rate of 5.5 mills would require notice by first-class mail to each taxpayer. The tentative millage rate adopted at this hearing will become the maximum millage rate which may be adopted by the city commission at the public hearing on the final millage rate. A unanimous vote or two-thirds vote may be required to adopt the tentative millage rate as the final millage rate. At the final public hearing, the city commission may adopt a millage rate which is less than the tentative millage rate established tonight.
All right, we now have a briefing by the Assistant Finance Director.
I'm Vanna Lewski, Assistant Finance Director. I will be presenting the city of Ocoee tentative budgets for fiscal year 2026. For budget hearings scheduled, tonight is tentative budget first hearing, and the next final budget hearing is scheduled for next Wednesday, September 17, also at 6:00 p.m. First, I would like to share some economic highlights. As we see, there is housing, a median housing market. Median home sale in Florida has declined by 2.7%. Total home sale fell by 4.41% compared to last year. And also, 31.6% of listings have experienced price reduction. So I would like to give some information on that, how it affects property tax revenue. So for the price reduction happened in 2025, it will be determined, the property tax, in 2027 fiscal year. Slowing in labor market, wage and job growth continue to slow. National unemployment grade is at 4.2%, where Florida unemployment rate is at 3.7%. That's a 0.3% increase compared from last year July. Also, that's something that we, City Manager, also and Commissioner, Mayor, also looking, monitoring those legislative plan to reduce and eliminate property tax. Because that with the tax reform, the result will be significantly impact on tax revenue. And that will be across of Florida. We also want to say some inflation. The annual CPI index is at 2.7%, and they believe that recent tariff tax also is a fact contribute to the increase. So also Expo projected that the inflation will reach by 3% by the end of 2025. So if the city continue commitment, the priorities include public safety infrastructure, roads improvement, sidewalk and resurfacing repairs, upgrading of key utility infrastructure, and also regulatory compliance, providing safer street, investing in quality of life We would like to share and bring to your attention that some changes in the budgets reallocation this year. Employee benefit costs, cell phone expense are now allocated directly to the individual department. Subway subscription expense are now budgets in under information services and technology department. These expenses were previously budgeted under general government. Legal expenses also have been budgets have been reallocated to City Manager and Police Department. Why we change, why we make all these changes? Because we believe that all these changes will improve transparency and also can give a true operating cost versus previously that all those expenses into one department. So we believe that these new changes will provide a clear picture of what each department actual cost would be. So now we move into general fund revenue. As you see, that property tax is still the primary sources for general revenue, and that generate $25.5 million. So I want to, I want to make sure that, to address that, the $25.5 million we budget is with 4.95 millers rate versus the proposed rate 5.5 mill. So we can see that the general, the property tax generate still does not enough to cover the public safety cost. So I will show you next by the cost by each department. So public safety still remain the largest cost for general fund. Police department is have the largest budgets of 24.8 million for this fiscal, for the next coming fiscal year. And 19.3 million is personnel costs. The capital budget is include 931,000 allocated for patrol police vehicle replacement and Fire department is followed at the second largest budgets in the city with 14.8 million. So this year, we funded for three full-time positions for firefighters. The key operating expand for fire department is new EMS equipment striker list that we implement this fiscal year, and that's we got 313,000 annually for the next 10 years. Also, in this fiscal year, we budgeted for to purchase 60 radios, and the cost is 80,000 per year. So that will be spread over the next four years. 950,000 also budgeted for a new fire engine for fire department. So next, we would like to share for budgets for public works. Total budgets for public work is 11.6 million, and the larger portion of that is street division, which is 6.8 million. So this next coming fiscal year, 3.1 million is budgeted for road paving, sidewalk repairs, and two additional street position added. There's also 709,000 budgets for mowing equipment and vehicle replacement. You see that for the last four year, the city were able to manage to budget and keep the miller's rate remaining at 4.95. So it's no change in 2023. Again, the ad revenue budgets at 25.45 generate 25.45 million at the miller's rate 4.95. That's increase of 1.2 million from the rollback rate and increase 1.9 million over prior year, which is used to balance budget. So budgets highlight, the key to take away, there's no change in miller's rate, it's still remaining a 4.95. We also want to share that the total for the city operating funds increased by 10.6 million or 8%, and that bring up the total 237 million budget. So how do the increase come from enterprise fund? That's for upgrade, for schedule upgrade and replacement. And study for master plan and also funding for new position. One of the increase come from CIA funding for street project and one new position. The remaining of the increase is come from general fund and road impact fee. For capital project, the total capital project request for next coming fiscal year is 18 million, and 8.1 million request is for vehicle and equipment replacement, pipe replacement, and also for upgrade of water and wastewater treatment. CIA budgeted 1.9 million for flu for street project. We also want to share that general fund transfer for capital project this year have decreased by 15% and resulting from prioritizing the funding for critical need and also that cities that were able to utilize the remaining of the bond proceeds that available. So overall, for general fund budget increase is only by 1.8% for next coming fiscal year. So that is conclude my presentation tonight. So if we welcome any question or any direction from Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you.
All right, first, we're going to open up to anybody in the public for comments and questions regarding the tentative budget. Anybody in the audience?
Is that be online?
I can't hear you.
Is this presentation online? Please tell me it's online.
The presentation that was just made will be made available online on the website. We can. Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody has any questions on the tentative budget for the citizens? If not, I will now call upon the city commission for comments and questions. Anybody in the city commission?
I'm pleased that we're keeping this at 4.95, that we're budgeted that.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? I have no comment.
No comment.
All right. Now we got to go back to, I have no comments on it either, announcement from the finance director again here. And we now call upon the public for, do you have any more comments?
No.
You got it there next, so what was it supposed to be?
That's if we, she needs to say the recomputed tentative millage rate. Does she need to make an announcement, Dean?
Yes.
Okay. Just go ahead. You can do it from there, just be loud.
So the recomputed, the computer recomputed tentative millage rate and the percentages by which the recomputed millage rate since the rollback rate. This percent is the proposed tentative millage rate increase in property tax is at 4.95 miller's rate.
A little confusing here.
95, sorry. The miller's rate 4.95, 4.95 miller's rate, and budgeted at 95%.
That it, correct. All right, well.
Ma'am, what's? I got. You announced the percentage above the rollback rate that was in the presentation. Okay, Vanna? Can you do that? The percentage of the rollback rate above the rollback rate?
We'll do the rollback after we have the discussion.
Yeah, I just need to have some information for when I. It's 26.
Yeah, we'll do that now.
26 on 4.6 is 5.
All right.
It's in your, it's in your presentation.
So the rollback rate is 4.6. The rollback rate is 4.689% and.
Oh, I see.
4.95 is 26 more, which is 5.5%.
Yes, 17.28 if it was 5.5.
That's at 5.5. That's at 5.5, correct.
Yeah. 5.5 was 17.28, but.
The percentage is 4.95 is a 5% increase over 4.689.
Correct.
What is the percentage over the rollback rate if you are balanced at 4.9?
5.5%. I'm going to announce for the record that the proposed new tentative millage rate of 4.95 is 5.5% above the rollback rate.
Okay.
Didn't I open the announcement? All right, now we got, anybody in the public got comments or questions? Come to the podium and fill out your form. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much, Commission, Mayor, city staff, and everyone who is in attendance. My name is Chris Atkins. I live at 606 Ridgefield Avenue, a little more than 23-year resident. And I kind of put some stuff down here I'd like to ask, but since I'm on the time, in the past, I've been able to ask the finance director some questions before I got to the commission. I may have missed that. So I'm going to skip past that particular section, and I may come back to it. I want to talk a little bit about a timeline. So the city staff presents items to the commission for your approval. And you guys make educated decisions based upon what staff lets you know about. So I'm going to set this timeline here because it will come into play with what I'm going to speak about here, and I can show this to you guys as well. So city staff recommended on March 3rd that we increase our reclaimed water fee by 90%. We had a lack of infrastructure. There were some situations with Orange County that forced us into that situation, which I understood. And the city commission went ahead and approved that. The next thing that we approved was 4.5 million for the golf course, to purchase the golf course. Now during that process, there was something that disturbed me, I was here. During the presentation from the city staff, they did not omit the fact that we were also going to have to take on operating expenditures with the purchase of this 4.5 million golf course. Now, you may say, and that also passed, by the way, and that brings up my presentation here, because to me, when I look through the budget, I constantly see deficiencies like in the garbage department. We were nearly a million dollars behind going into this session here. Clearly, we understand our frustrations that we have with our fire department, lack of equipment that they duly need, and they have been fighting just kind of stay alive. But you know, they've done an outstanding job, if you look at what they've accomplished. But, but if you look here, if you look at how we approved a rate fee increase for residents, we then approved funding of millions of dollars for a golf course, and then we came up to the commission about fire needs, garbage needs, et cetera. So I mean, I would just think, you know, from a business perspective, that they're only as good as the tools in their toolbox, right? So I'm not saying, and I'm not asking any questions, I just personally, if I sat on the diocese, would be wondering why these deficiencies were not stated prior to this? Because I would be hard pressed to understand that they did not know we had deficiencies in the garbage and fire department prior to giving the commission the suggestion and later the passage of purchasing a golf course and all operating costs that goes with it. To me, I'd like to see those operating costs stay with, you know, our firefighters and first responders and infrastructure and items like that. So to me, that's suspect, but you know, hey, I'm sure there's probably something that is in place. You know, I can say for years, right, years, years, city of Ocoee has long collected the highest fees in millage rate all around. And we find ourselves in a fiscal crisis, right? Right, a financial crisis, I think it was Mr. Kennedy said a few months ago, right? But if you look at what we've been getting, all the way back to 217, 5.65 and non-adleum fees. Do you know Maitland doesn't have any adleum fees? Belle Isle doesn't, Winter Garden does it? Look at this. The only others that have non-adleum fees are Apaca and Windermere, and they're much lower in scissor millage. I think when we keep in mind as we go forward about these non-adleum fees, we have to understand something, people. If you're disabled, if you're on fixed income, if you're a vet, and you're not, you are not exempt as you are for your adleum fees. So when the city prioritizes implementing non-adleum fees, they are actually using regressive taxation. It's a hard time out there for people.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Your time's up.
Could I please have another minute?
No, sir. Five minutes, what you get.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll never move forward if we don't listen to people, but I do value your time. Thank you very much.
That's enough, sir. I will tell you that Winter Gardens go into 4.85.
I don't care about Winter Garden or anybody else. I care about Ocoee.
You must care, you got it on your board.
Ma'am, make a request. May I make a request?
Yes, sir.
Can the clerk or someone get a picture of both sides of that board so we have it for the record?
Yes, yes, sir.
Since it's. I'll make sure, yeah, I'll actually make sure she gets it, and I'll email it to her as well. Yeah, yes, sir.
All right.
And I'll get your forms, yeah.
Anybody else in the public have any comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Make sure you all fill out forms when you get through, okay? You have five minutes.
We'll get, when you finish, fill out one of those forms.
Hi, everyone. I originally from Hong Kong, moved to Florida 13 years ago, and moved to the city of Ocoee, in the Ocoee area. Three years ago, I used to live in Windermere and Champion Gate, but as a new home buyer in Ocoee, we like the environment here, unfortunately. And when I review the property tax, okay, so it's point out that the property tax is the highest, I think, compared in the Orange County everywhere. I don't understand, so I, as I used to work in Disney payroll, I'm very good with lumber. So I have a friend who live in Tang House in Windermere, same size as me, but he only paying 3,000 or 4,000 property tax. So I raised concern of the Orange County as well, and I talked with the Orange County property arpeso as well, why? And because basically, if we have any question about need to address by the Orange County, they always delegate the job to city, I understand. But I don't understand is we already pay the 4.1 something with Orange County tax, same as people who live in Winter Garden or Windermere, but additional on top extra, we need to pay extra for the city of Ocoee for 4.1 something. Now it's talking about 5.5 after the budget. So overall, look like 10% for everyone who live in Ocoee, I feel is very unfair. And I talked to the Orange County property arpeso, why we cannot one proportion, Orange County and Ocoee, and together as a 4.9 or 5% or even maximum 6, instead of altogether like 10%? Because I feel as a citizen in Florida, we feel we paying so much, and our property value is not that worth to pay that much property tax. It's very, it seems look like we are really, really unfair in this situation. As I read the news from the governor, they suing the publisher about the tax book, about different county have charged different rate. So I just feel that in Ocoee, citizen have the same situation right now. We charging a different proportion rate is in unfair situation. So hopefully, Orange County and city of Ocoee able to calculate carefully and in a fair way for the citizen in Ocoee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The form's right on the corner there. You can get it and give it to us before you leave tonight. Thank you. All right.
Noreen Dorkin, Editor-in-Chief, Vox Populi, WinterGardenVox.com. I just wanted to get some clarity. If I recall, y'all said that you needed the fire fee, and if the fire fee wasn't imposed, you were. you were going to have to raise the millage. And you got the fire fee for one year, and, but you didn't raise the millage. So can you explain how you're balanced at 4.95? How did that happen?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
You said you were going to have to raise the millage regardless...
If we did not, no, I said if we do not put the proposed fire fee in place, then we would be proposing a millage rate increase.
Okay.
Okay, so the Commission put the fire assessment increase in place, which allowed us to stay where we're at. Period.
And that was enough to even you out so that you don't have to have an increase? The fire fee took care of it?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
That, you know, let me just add to that. That is going to be an ongoing discussion. And the costs, which we presented that evening, the cost of the fire department, equipment, everything are continuing to go up. We do not know what is going to happen in Tallahassee with regard to the proposed tax reform. And so, we'll be having a very similar discussion a year from now, and that's going to affect what we do for next year's proposed budget.
I remember it being an open-ended question about whether the millage would still increase regardless of the fire fee, which is why I was asking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not anticipate that needing to go up. We set it artificially high at 5.5 because we are still realizing the impacts of Amendment 5 that passed. So, a tenth of a mil is not really equal to a tenth of a mil. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
All right. Now, call upon the City Commission for questions and comments. Commissioner Kennedy?
I have a bunch of comments.
Go ahead.
I'll try to be quick. Ma'am, your comments, you asked some great questions, and there were some very simple answers to them. We agree with you. I think almost everyone up here, I won't speak for everyone. It's a travesty that we all send money to Orange County. They take our money, and we have to pay more money to Ocoee. We would love for them to take less of our money and let us just pay our own bills. But it's unfair, it's unjust, and our city manager and other cities are working on things to try to reduce the amount that we pay for services that we don't utilize. So that's a great point. On the millage, and you said it, you said, in Ocoee, our property is not worth as much as some of those other cities. So our taxes, our taxes, our total taxes aren't higher than the other cities. Because our property value is lower on average, and we have less commercial property, less restaurants, et cetera, our millage rate is higher. But that's merely a factor that to raise $100 of taxes, we have to tax at a higher rate, because applied to a lower property value, that's how the math works. But you asked great questions, and thank you for those. Mr. Atkins? Yeah, I said there's a financial crisis. I don't think everyone is tracking how this works, to be honest. I noticed you came in a little late and missed part of our excellent presentation from our new improved team. She had a slide in there which said the property values for '25 went down 2.7 percent or 4.7 percent? And that that decrease in property values will be calculated in the fiscal year '27 budget. So this year, we're still using the numbers where the property values were on the increase. With Amendment 5 and us not knowing what the full ramifications of those will be as Tallahassee still fiddles while Rome burns, we already know that next year, we're going to be calculating on a lower property value, as I just explained, at a lower rate with more exemptions. So we know, we have projected, our city manager has warned us, we have a pending financial crisis that is coming, that we need to be ready for. And I think you've mentioned in your timeline, has the city manager informed us of the reclaim needs, the garbage needs, et cetera? And the answer to that is, yes, of course, he counsels us when we're making these decisions on other things that we're going to have to consider. I don't know about the conversations that everyone has, because of Sunshine Law, we all have one-on-one conversations with the city manager outside of meetings. But I can tell you that in my conversations with him, I get a lot of warnings. I get a lot of heads up of what's coming down the road, and that's why I made the comment I made, that there is a financial crisis being put on us by Tallahassee, by some really bad policies. I personally, I think the class warfare that's being played, and that's what it is, you know, veterans, disabled, teachers, first responders, I own a small business, I work in a large business. I mean, let's just give everybody an exemption, and let's just pit everybody against each other. And let's decide who are the people in society who aren't contributing to the rest of our... I mean, that's ridiculous policy, and we're on the tail end of it. And as a person that understands finance, as a CPA and a CFO, I think the basis of the way that these additional property exemptions are being handed out to special groups, special needs and special groups, is extremely offensive and un-American. And I think we should all reject it. I know a lot of people get one. A lot of people are veterans, or a lot of people are teachers, or a lot, and they like it. And that's the point. They're bribing people, basically, with their...
My mom died.
With their own money.
... disability, barely afford anything, and she needed that exactly.
With their own money.
Hold on, hold on.
They're bribing, they're bribing people, they're bribing people with their... I didn't say anything about your mother's personal situation. I said that the politicians in Tallahassee are...
Hold on, McScott, hold on. Once before, I've told you about talking out when you're not supposed to. So let, do not talk when he's talking.
I respond that...
No, sir. You've had your time. Let him talk.
Okay.
He gets to talk. Go ahead.
They're pitting us all against each other, and that's why you're offended and I'm offended, which is, we're being played. And it's causing strife. It's causing hardship. We're raising taxes because we need money, and they're taking away our revenue source. And as the city manager has said several times, they're not offering an alternative revenue source to the cities that will make up the difference. So that's the answer to your question.
I value all you guys. We can also do some cuts and not spend things that we don't need to as well. There's more than one way to do that. You don't have to throw me out, sir.
What did he say?
He said you don't have to throw him out.
That's good.
I'm going to address it anyway, because people may be watching, and they may think those are legitimate questions. The operating expenses of the golf course, plus the operating revenues that we received, made $250,000 approximately in the last month for the City of Ocoee, in the last two months. So on net, that is revenue, additional revenue for the city. And since we're short of revenue, that turns out to be a really smart investment. I'll conclude with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? No.
No, I don't think I have any comments. I think that we have discussed the millage rate and the city expenses in detail. I'm sorry, I don't have my phone. I'm sorry. I know we've discussed the city millage rate and the expenses we have, and every deduction that's given exemption, I'm not criticizing them by any means, but when someone gets an exemption, we still have to make up the money to run the city. Folks still want their sidewalks. They still want, you know, we're putting $500,000 in the budget this year to, which is just basically the tip of the iceberg, I think, to fix the sidewalks. We want streets paved. We want the services, we have to pay for them. Unfortunately, that's what it comes down to. And every exemption that someone gets, and as we get more exemptions, all that means is, we still need the money to operate the city. We want our services, we enjoy our services. I think we've got wonderful services in Ocoee, and we've got a wonderful staff that provides these services. But I don't think, I mean, again, going up 4.95, we're not going up. We're doing the best we can to keep the millage rate as low as we can to accommodate all the services. And all I can say is, this year, we're going to have to tighten our belt because we don't know what's coming down from Tallahassee. And every time Tallahassee offers you an exemption or offers you something, you realize that all that does is puts the city in a situation that we have to charge more, because we all want our services. And we, I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the Commission, but I'm sure I can say that we want you to have the best services you can in the City of Ocoee. And I think you do have them. I want, I love when I get wonderful accolades from folks who tell us how wonderful our staff is. But again, we have to support them. And the way we support them is by the military. So please understand that we're citizens here, too. We're paying our bills, just as you are, and we understand the strain it puts on. But we still want to provide you the services you can, we want to provide you the best services we can. And at this point, it's 4.95, which is not an increase from last year. I don't know what else I can say. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I could just correct one thing that Mr. Atkins said, because I think it's important, due to the fact that we have some public here. He reported that we increased reclaim by 90 percent. That is 100 percent false. As a matter of fact, built into this budget, and I briefed the Commission on the ramifications of Orange County's ultimatum for an uninterruptible backup supply and the associated cost with that, the city is eating approximately $1.1 million in our new reclaim costs associated with this mandate, and not passing that on to the citizens. So I wanted to make sure that that was clarified for the record. Thank you.
Do you have anything, Mr.? No, sir. The, on the board, you've seen the different adlethrum in different cities and the rates. Well, some towns, like, for instance, Winter Garden has a lot of $2 billion more money to get the taxes out of than we do. We don't have that commercial in the Fowler Groves where they pay all the money for the thing. So there's a difference. And some people don't pay, some people don't pay that much. Some people are living in houses, they're not what the value of somebody else's is. So the value of taxation to each one goes different. I mean, that's the way it is. I will make a comment about the golf course. We're not purchasing it, we still own it. We owned it from the get-go. But the problem was, it was not getting run the way it was supposed to. It's a city golf course, which belongs to the city. That money was paid out to get them out of the lease, to get it back to the city. And as Commissioner Kennedy said a while ago, we've been averaging 200, couple hundred thousand dollars in a month. So figure out what it'll be in the next year or so as we gain the money back. And when we do the new lease, some of that money's going to come back to us. So that's a whole different animal altogether. And we had to do that because we weren't making any money off of it. It was going down and down and down and down. And the property belongs to the city. So that's why that went on. I apologize about that. You know, we have rules. We're supposed to go by them. If you can't go by them, then you don't need to get up and talk. Then keep talking when you're doing it. So we, I know that, I know, for instance, I was, who was it telling me? My wife told me today, Sanford's tax is 7.4. They're, for what we're doing, 4.95. And yes, it's been nine years or 10 years, we've lowered it from 5.95 down to 4.95. And that does lower your taxes. You talking about Orange County, you're, and what is it, Craig? 22 percent? What is it we pay out, our citizens pay out to the county?
It's something like 4.6 mils, 4.43.
So tell me, tell me what you get out of the Orange County. Mosquito, mosquito spraying? They don't, they don't, they don't pay. They don't do it. They're supposed to spray mosquitoes in this town. They never spray. You know, all the different things they're supposed to do. They're supposed to come out and take care of their roads and all the things that are in the city, that goes inside our city. They don't do that either. So we're paying your money out, you're paying your money out to them, where we don't get any benefits out of it.
They provide schools, okay?
No, ma'am. That's under Orange County. They get a tax for that. You get taxed for that also.
That's the first two items.
The Orange, City of Orange, Orange County is a separate entity altogether, and Orange County School Board. I will, that's good, I'm glad you said that. I wrote up a form a few years ago and sent it to the Orange County School Board to show them how many million dollars we give them. Now, in the last 15 years, they've not built anything they said they were going to build out here. We, this middle school, the only middle school we got, we're the third-largest city in Orange County. The only middle school that we have is this one up here. Now they're trying to make it bigger. We don't get any of the funds back from them right now. They're putting it all out on Hamlin or wherever that horizon's west. No, ma'am, the school taxes are separate entity you're paying. If you looked at your tax, look at what we're paying. For instance, the gentleman that lives up on one place pays $160 a year for his taxes towards the city to be run. And city manager, what was you telling me it is a year for a citizen's house cost to operate?
Our average costs are in the $3,500 per household range.
And how much do we get?
The average collection is about $1,800.
So how are we supposed to pay it? That's, that's why we have to do what we have to do. And you, sir, I had open public conversations.
It's just a short question. I know it's not the right time.
I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to let you come up here to the podium. You have to fill a form out. I'm going to let you make that comment. Not supposed to do that, but I'm going to do it.
I appreciate it, and it's a friendly question.
Most times, we don't get friendly.
I want to start by saying that I've been here 27 years. My name is Alan Vance, and I've been happy with pretty much everything you've done. You don't do everything just the way I would do it, but nobody does. You can ask my wife. You know, I don't do things the way she thinks I should. But there's a movement in Tallahassee to do away with property taxes altogether.
Can you get in front of my...
Yeah, get in front of my there, right there.
I'll do this when they...
So no...
I'm not experienced with this. Is this okay?
Yeah.
All right. There's a movement in Tallahassee to do away with property taxes.
Yes.
It's scary. Do you have a plan?
Not yet.
Are you going to educate the public?
Yeah.
That's the question.
Well, the, I don't think they even know what they're doing. We've discussed this, not with them, we did it the League of Cities, where we just had a meeting for the state League of Cities, they're going to be fighting it, because how do they expect us then to pay for your fire protection, police protection, water protection, sewer, and all of that?
Sales tax, right?
Yeah. So that's one of the problems. And we're, this young man here will be working on that problem for us, too. So...
Well, I just think, but if you educate the public...
Right. You know, and I know, that's going to pass. If they put it on the ballot, who's going to turn it down?
I hope that people wake up.
Wait, no, sir. I would bet you a good bet that they won't. They're going to vote for that, because first thing they see is, whoops, I'm going to get this all gone. And I will say something about, and I have no qualms with Commissioner Kennedy about what he said, about some things they get credit for. I think, I'm a veteran, a disabled veteran, and it took me 39 years to get the money that I get from them on the thing. 39 years, because I spent a year in Vietnam and got Agent Orange, open-heart surgery, everything else because of that. No, I'm not shamed of getting that money, but it took a long time to get it. I could have used it 30 years ago when I was raising five kids. But things like that is probably some of the things that hinder the city from what they're, from what we're doing. But I agree with you. I think what's going to happen, they're going to pass that. If it goes out into the public for voting, you're going to see it pass. So, yeah, and I appreciate you being here tonight, sir. You can see how many people from the public come to this, so we appreciate it.
So it's, my question is, you need to appropriate a little bit of money to educate the public...
Yes, sir.
... on this matter.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Anybody else up here got anything to say?
Just so you know, Alan, Florida League of Cities, we're all involved in it. I've been involved. There's something called Local Voices United. We're always trying. It's, we don't want people to depend on just us to be the advocates. We need support. And, you know, we go to Tallahassee every year.
Yeah.
And you're right on. You know, again, our voice is just one. And our legislators, they have phones. You call them. You let them know. You tell them how you feel. But again, this, taxes are a concern that we're gonna have.
I also would just pass along a little bit of information. How many people, of course, you know a lot of people here, how many people go to the county? Go talk to the county commissioners? Nobody.
No, wait, sir.
Maybe you do. But most people I know and I've talked to up here do not go to the Orange County and say anything. They're taking, like we said a while ago, all that money, we don't get any of it back. So nobody goes down to Orange County. We've tried out of, out of the last four, maybe eight years from the commissioner we had, we had no, nothing out of the benefits from that county commissioner for this city.
4.43.
What's that?
That's, Orange County is 4.43.
Yeah, but I'm saying, we've got anything out of our commissioner for this district? Not at all. Right, Craig?
Well, I want to be tactful about this, but the services that we get are animal control, mosquito control, and our proportionate share of the supervisor, I mean, the Department of Corrections and the county roads that we have. Be happy to speak to anyone off the record about the value, but they're collecting approximately 23 million annually from our citizens. And there is some question as to whether that adds up to the value that we're getting.
Yeah. Well, all right. Let's move on. All right. Now we got motion to adopt the tentative millage rate. I need a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate.
I'll make that motion. Do I need to say it exactly?
Let me, let me read the title first. Yeah. Waiting for my moment. An ordinance of the city of Okoye, Florida, establishing a tentative millage rate of 4.95 mils for adverum taxes for the city of Okoye for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, providing for military adjustment, providing for collection of taxes, providing for 5.5 in millage rate over the rolled back rate, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right. Now, so Commissioner Wilson
Am I supposed to read this?
Made the motion. I need a second.
Do I need to read that?
Yes.
Okay. I move that the city, the city commission adopt a tentative millage rate of 4.95 mils for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second about Commissioner Firstman. Any more comments? No more comments? Let's vote.
I think I made that mistake earlier.
Motion carried unanimously with Commissioner Oliver absent. All right. No more, there's no amendments to the tentative budget? Commission, this motion is only for amendments to the, but we don't have that. All right. And you've read the ordinance.
Yes.
No, there's another one.
Huh?
There's another.
There's an ordinance actually adopting the budget, yes.
We don't want to go by without it.
An ordinance of the city of Okoye, Orange County, Florida, adopting tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026. Providing for severability, providing an effective date.
This thing says do it again, Craig. This, it says here, they got me a little skipped here. It says that this, I want to entertain a motion to adopt a tentative budget.
Correct. There's two different ordinances.
Yeah, there's the millage rate and the budget, yes, sir.
All right, let's do it again.
I'll move that the city commission adopt the tentative budget as distributed along with the revisions resulting from the budget workshop for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026.
Sir, Commissioner Kennedy, I need a second.
A second.
All right. No more comments? Let's vote for that. All right. Carries unanimously Commissioner Oliver Ebsen. All right. Before we conclude, I would like to announce the public hearing to consider the final millage rate and final budget is scheduled for Wednesday, September 17, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. to be held here in our City Hall commission chambers. The hearing has been advertised in accordance with the provisions of Section 200.065 Florida statutes and Section C37 of Article 6 of the Okoye City Charter. The appropriate ordinance necessary to adopt the final millage rate and final budget will be prepared by city staff and all other action necessary to comply with the requirements of Section 200-0.065 Florida statutes will be undertaken. All righty. We'll see you a week from tonight. Thank you very much.